I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, April 24th, 2018, and we'll start with roll call.
Don Francis?
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Robin Kline is absent. Sina Sharp is excused. Barbara Doss?
Here.
First item on our agenda this evening is a special presentation, a proclamation for the 50th anniversary of the Platteville Optimists Club.
Good evening, everybody. It's with great joy that I get to present this proclamation to our morning Optimists Club. I've had the privilege of speaking to them a few different times, and they are indeed a delightful group of people who do some really fantastic things in the community. And even somebody who's only been here a short time, such as myself, you can't be here for very long and not know the good works that the Optimists do, ranging from oratory contests to basketball skills to a very special Christmas time program. And so with that said, I'm going to read a proclamation for them, starting with, "Whereas the Optimists Club of Platteville, a civic organization with a membership currently comprised of over 100 individuals and local businesses, has since April 26, 1968, served the community of Platteville and youth. And whereas the members of the Optimists Club of Platteville are committed to support the mission of Optimist International by providing hope and positive vision for the future, deliver on the vision of the Swiss District by striving to be the premier youth-serving organization in southern Wisconsin, and live according to the vision of their club by affecting the lives of youth in a positive and encouraging manner. Whereas the underlying commitment of an optimist is to encourage optimism as a philosophy of life, utilizing the guidance of the Optimist creed and believing that the giving of oneself and service to others will advance the well-being of humankind, community life, and the world. Whereas the Optimists Club of Platteville proclaim they are a friend of youth and work to bring out the best in kids through their sharing of time, talent, and financial support. And whereas during the 50-year history of the Optimists Club of Platteville, they have been recognized as a distinguished club and honor club by the Southwest Wisconsin District, Optimists, and Optimist International, offering further testimony to the commitment and leadership of members to conduct business responsibly and uphold the credibility of their organization within the community. And whereas the Optimists Club of Platteville has for the last 50 years unfailingly donated 100% of their fundraising profits directly back into the community in support of youth activities and organizations and community events. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Kurt, by virtue of the authority vested in me as city manager of the City of Platteville, Wisconsin, hereby proclaim Thursday, April 26, 2018, as Platteville Optimists Club's 50th Anniversary Day in the City of Platteville. I encourage all citizens to recognize the achievements and goodwill gestures the Optimists Club has afforded our community. I hereby commend the club for a wonderful heritage and a bright future, and I encourage everyone listening to consider becoming an optimist." And with that...
And I don't know, Eileen, if you want to come? Eileen, do you want to come up for a photo? Eileen? Do you want to come up for a photo?
Local Optimists.
On behalf of the Optimists Club, I'd like to thank you, Karen, for the kind words and the Common Council for recognizing our efforts and services that we've done to the community, for the youth of the community. And in an inspired effort, we wanted to put forth a donation for a legacy gift, so I'd like to present Luke Peters with the...
I'd like to have you step up to the microphone so I can really hear this.
I'd like to present Luke Peters with a check for $5,000 to put towards a legacy gift for the tot slide at the pool. So, thank you very much.
And I guess for members of the audience that may not be aware, the tot slide is a new feature that will be coming to the Platteville Aquatics Center this summer, and we're very, very grateful to the contribution and leadership of the Optimists for helping us to make that happen, along with the Community Foundation.
And as an Optimist member, I'd like to say, "Nice to see everybody."
This is us, too.
All right, continuing on with our agenda, next item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you prefer a separate discussion and action. A is council minutes from the April 10, 18, special and regular meeting. B, payment of bills. C, appointments to boards and commissions. And each council member this evening has received the information about which committees, commissions, boards they are going to act as a liaison to, and people may not know this, but as a council member, you also have approximately four other commissions, boards, or committees that you also attend besides the regular twice-a-month council meetings. Also, the other appointments this evening for the Airport Commission, a partial term ending 11/118, Troy Magid. The Freud and Ray Animal Care Trust Fund, Dr. Jeff Rollus. The Historic Preservation Commission, two three-year terms ending in 5/121, Paul Maris Canisch is a reappointment, and Gary Prohaska is an appointment. And then the Plan Commission, a three-year term for Stacy Strobel. Other information in the packet includes licenses, a temporary Class B retailer's license to serve fermented malt beverages and wine for the Platteville Main Street Program, the Historic Walk Down Main, which is on Tuesday, May 1st. If you'd like to buy tickets for that event, you can contact the Main Street office. One-year and two-year operator licenses to sell or serve alcohol are also in the packet. A run permit, it's a 10K relay or a 2K walk by UW Platteville Health and Performance for Saturday, May 5th. And finally, a resolution, 1805, repealing and recreating assigned parking locations within the City of Platteville. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as published, as presented.
Motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. We do ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes, and we have one person who's asked to speak, Isaac Shanley. Give your name and your address, Isaac, please.
Isaac Shanley. I live at 1030 Seamer Street here in Platteville. The only reason I'm up here is myself and a few others will be meeting with the staff and also, excuse me, also the chief of police on Thursday at 10:00 AM for to come up with proposals, maybe ATV, UTV route through the City of Platteville in the future. So, if anybody has any questions between now and then, or even after we get started, feel free to give myself a call. Also, a few members from the township will be involved as well, Bob Digman, Chad Digman, Kirk Timmons will also be helping us out with routes as well. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. In our packet, there are reports, Water and Sewer Commission, Stockhausen, Killian, and Nall. Well, not Nall any longer, sorry.
No addition.
No addition. Police and Fire Commission, Francis?
Nothing to add.
Airport Commission, Doss?
Just to let you know that there's construction at the airport.
And Community Safe Routes Committee meeting is also, minutes are also in the packet. So, the first action item this evening, Resolution 1814, awarding the sale of $1,270,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds. Don.
Good evening. You've been provided with two documents this evening, a revised copy of the sale resolution and a sale day report. So, the action that you're taking this evening will be the resolution that was prepared this afternoon by your bond attorneys. It's a slightly lower dollar amount than what was posted on your agenda. Your agenda stated $1,270,000. You'll actually be issuing bonds for $1,245,000. The, I'm going to walk through the sale day report. When we were here a month ago, you authorized us to proceed with the issuance of debt to finance your 2018 capital projects. That included some parking lot work and street improvements. So, we prepared a preliminary official statement with the assistance of your staff, and we held a rating review call with S&amp;P Standard and Poor's. Please report that they affirmed your AA- rating. We've attached a copy of that report. If you haven't had the chance to see it or review it, please do so, that it's very important to understand how the market views you as a credit quality for the issuance of debt. So, this morning at 10:30, we accepted bids on that debt issue. We received five bids, and I'll recap those for you in a moment. We award based upon the lowest cost of money to you, so the lowest bid, which is the true interest cost, which includes the, any fee for underwriter discount, the cost of interest and netted with any premium based. So, of those five bids, BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee was our winning bid. Their low bid at a 3.0774%. These bonds are being amortized over a period of 16 years. And that compared to our high bid, as summarized on the page two of this document, it's about $28,000, $29,000. So, that was the difference in range. Our bids were actually pretty close, and you'll see that in a moment when we look at the tabulation of that. Because of the way the bidding came in, we were able to reduce the bond size by $25,000. So, hence the reason the resolution is for a lower dollar amount, and you'll be approving that lower dollar amount when you consider this resolution. So, on page three of this document, we've accumulated the bid tabulation for you. So, BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee was our low bid. And if you go to the far right of this schedule, you'll see that true interest rate, that's that tabulation of the low bid, so 3.077%. So, you're financing this at that rate over the life of the issue on average. Bankers Bank out of Madison was the, our second bid, and they were a little bit higher at 3.12. Baird out of Milwaukee was a bidder, Bernardi Securities out of Chicago, and Northland Securities out of Minneapolis. Those were the tabulation of the five bids, and again, it's awarded based upon the lowest TIC. On page five is the sizing. This is, was included in the original authorization to proceed. The preliminary column is the financing of the projects and the estimate of issuance expenses, and the net bond side of $1,270. The column to the right then is the results of the sale today. Some of those issuance expenses were lower than our estimates, as well as, and the underwriter discount is one of the costs upfront, that as well was lower, that was a bid item. And we had a bit of an underwriter premium, which is money that we're able to reduce the issue by, and we have a small amount that's also going into your debt service fund to help pay the interest amount. So, that's the reason for our ability to reduce the bond sizing. And on page six then, is the final principal and interest structure. This is a schedule that may look familiar as when we were working through our long-range planning. We structured this issue consistent with the discussions we had during that long-range planning effort. And in the middle of the page then is the principal and interest that will be on this debt issue. We were able, again, to knock off $25,000 of that principal. You can see that difference reflected on the bottom of the schedule. The interest rates then, too, were a little bit lower, are, so, lower than projected interest expense. And ultimately, the project will, to finance these projects, it's about $33,200 less than the planning estimates when you authorized us to proceed. As I mentioned earlier, the rating report is attached, beginning on page seven. This is, this is the final published report that S&amp;P submitted to the market, and again, this is, this is like a personal credit score. The better the score, the lower the interest that you'll pay. And so, AA3 is a very good rating and is, was reflected in the rates that we did receive. And the very last page of this schedule is kind of an idea of where rates have been over the last five years. We are right about the average of that five-year period, the line across the middle. If you look over the last 12 months, towards the far right, we've seen, you know, in about January of last year, we were higher, were a little lower than we were a year ago in January, but our rates dropped way down in December, and they've actually been increasing a little bit. So, Nicola asked me earlier about some of the rates we saw when you did your refunding. We were probably at a little bit lower rates then, in terms of the market, than we are today, but still, on average, it's, they're, they're low interest rates over our, certainly over our last five-year period of time. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Does the city attorney review any of this?
You actually engaged Quarles and Brady, who is your bond attorney, and they serve as the attorney for this. They provide the opinion that you've complied with all the requirements to issue the debt and provide the opinion that they're tax exempt and follow the statutory purpose for doing that. So, your bond attorney is the one that reviewed it and prepared all the resolutions.
Reason I ask is because I received an email that listed a city attorney and also a city clerk.
Yeah, they're identified as individuals in your official statement, so they're certainly part of the officials that are identified in the, for the city, and they're provided with the copies of those documents as well. And the clerk is provided with all the resolutions and everything necessary to provide the official action on all of this debt issuance.
Any other questions, anyone? Is there a motion? And again, note the new dollar amount.
Well, I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 1814, awarding the sale of $1,245,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, specifically for parking lots and street improvements and other capital improvements, Series 2018A.
Motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I would just add that in terms of S&amp;P's evaluation of us, one of the categories that shifted was in the area of management, which went from strong to very strong, which was due to the work that the council did last year in developing the long-range financial plan.
And we also have to give credit to staff for developing the long-range financial plan, so thank you. All right, that's the only action item we have this evening. Information and discussion, ordinance 1805, repealing parking restrictions on North Chestnut Street.
Yes. 2002, the city established a no-parking area on the west side of North Chestnut Street, across from the driveway at then Gray's Nursing Home, to allow emergency vehicles to get in and out of the driveway for emergency calls. In 2005, at the request of the management, we created a visitor's parking stall on the east side of the street at Gray's Nursing Home. They've recently gone out of business. These ordinances and signs are no longer required, so we're recommending that we repeal the ordinances accordingly. Staff has sent out this information to residents on that block to, in case they had any comments. I have not received any comments from anyone on that block at this time.
Any questions, anyone? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the other, one of the other two items. Award contract 518, weed and grass mowing.
This is our annual contract to enforce the tall grass ordinances. The ordinance says lawns cannot be more than eight inches high. If, if it is, we investigate, verify, mail a notice to the owner. They have five days to comply, or the city will mow it and bill the cost to the owner. So, the contractor mows the lawn, they take photos before, after, and then the city bills the owner for the cost of service, plus a $50 administrative fee. In this contract, there are two portions. One is for mowing what I would consider larger areas, vacant parcels, generally an acre or more. Second is for the normal residential properties. And we had only one bidder, Four Seasons Landscaping. For the large areas, their bid was $200 per hour or a $200 minimum. For the residential lawns, it's 150 per hour or 150 minimum. And just remember, there's the $50 administrative fee on top of that, so the minimum bill would be $200 for one of those. Last year, the contract price was $92 an hour or, and $75 minimum. We think that that's a significant increase, and at this point, we feel that there are three options. One is to award the bid. Another is to reject the bid and direct staff to rebid the contract. The third would be to reject the bid and direct staff to, to do the mowing with, with employees.
And we have, we have had an internal conversation about option three, and we, we do believe that could be something that we could try for a year to see how, how it would work.
Okay, but last year, it was, you say, 21 lawns mowed.
Correct.
So, that, the higher seasonal staff for 21 lawns, that isn't very much work.
We would use the seasonal staff for other things when they weren't mowing lawns. I would also note that, given our new enforcement individual that we just hired, that, we do expect that probably the number will be higher, because we'll be doing a little bit more active enforcement than we have been doing in the past.
Well, another question, they had 132 complaints last year and 21 lawns mowed. What did we collect? As far as the city is concerned, what did we collect as far as fees? 21 times 50? And the complaints? We, we had a, the staff had to go out and take pictures and come back and send letters? Is that correct?
This is correct. I don't have the, I don't have the 2017 budget numbers in front of me. However, the administrative fee was increased from $40 to $50 from last year to this. I would have to go back and, and review that with the finance people to see exactly what we had. There may have been certain cases where, where the fee was forgiven for different reasons. You know, there, there are cases that staff forgives the fees rarely, but it happens.
So, so how did last year's mowing of delinquent lawns compare to years past? I, I mean, this is a significant increase, and so, a part of me wonders why the significant increase, and a part of me wonders if it has to do with volume. I have to put on staff, so if I've done this before, I put on a certain amount of staff, and then if I don't get the work, then I have staff that sit idle, but I have to pay, probably. So, I, you know, and, so I have some concern about taking this on as an internal activity, particularly if we expect a greater number.
When, we've, we've done a pendulum effect here over the, over a number of years. A few years back, council directed staff to take a very active role, go out and seek violations, and I don't remember the exact number, but we were up in to the multiple hundreds of, of lawns inspected or complained. I don't remember how many were actually mowed, probably in the neighborhood of 50 or 60. After that, subsequent council asked staff to reduce its direct enforcement, and so the, the numbers were, were decreased. The other issue is that last year, we had a different contractor than this one. I think, I don't know for certain, but I believe that the one contractor who did it last year has decided to not do this business this year. So, we have another contractor who has submitted a bid. As you can see, we did, in fact, send it to a number of people who have either expressed interest or bid on this job in the past, and we only had the one bid.
Okay. And during the past week, the new code enforcement officer appeared at my door and introduced herself, and I got a copy of her job description. So, my question is, in looking at this job description, what is going to be the plan or program, whatever you want to call it, as far as what the code enforcement officer will do? So, I find things such as parking on the grass, location of the parking around the building, around the property, weed and grass control, snow removal, so forth. So, it talks about code. And then, in the, in the water and sewer bills, I, we received this stuffer, which says, "Keep him, keep us beautiful and safe." So, is the code enforcement officer going to be working on, on this as a program, as part of her, his, her duties? So, we have things like, oh, for example, buildings, buildings and structures, broken doors and windows, deterioration of ports and landings, broken or defective elements of a building, yard and landscape areas, overgrown grass, weeds, trees, other plant materials, allowing the growth of noxious weeds. So, my question is, and then here's down bottom, vehicles parked, parked in the grass. So, my question is, is the code enforcement officer going to be on a program of carrying out these things which are listed on this stuffer and the things that are part of our city code? Is there a program made up yet? I, I bring it up because a couple years ago, on one Sunday evening, suddenly a person appeared at my door, and rather irate that the person received a letter about parking on the grass. And I inquired of city staff, at least one, about what was the program. Nobody could seem to give me an answer as to what the program was, that suddenly here somebody is getting a, a letter about parking on the grass, and, and they appear at my house, and I had not heard about the program, and I couldn't learn about the program. So, is there going to be a definite program set up based upon the hiring of this new code enforcement officer and the information that's set out, sent out as far as this stuffer?
I'll take a stab at that, but maybe this is best also, maybe this is something you want to talk about more detail in a work session. But just to go back to kind of the changes that we made this spring, where we did some reallocation of staff, and we eliminated one position to create a building maintenance specialist position to help us deal with some of our deferred maintenance issues. When we did that, we had certain code enforcement activities that still, would still need to be done, but didn't, we didn't have anyone to do them. So, at that time, we used a vacancy that we happened to have, and then we reformatted that position from being an administrative support to help us with some aspects of code enforcement. enforcement, particularly snow removal, weed control, parking. This individual will be going out in the neighborhoods and occasionally, as they're looking at other issues, snow enforcement, weeds. If they see other issues, they will be documenting those issues and forwarding them up to community development. The community development will still hold the responsibility for doing letters and citations related to the type, most of the types of things that you read on that, that information sheet, again with the exception, exception of weed enforcement, snow removal.
Now, will that individual operate on the basis of complaint? Or will the individual operate on the basis of driving around, sees a place with 10-inch grass and then proceeds?
We will be doing some proactive driving around.
Okay. I guess my, right now, my last comment is to award the bid as presented. To me, the goal is to get people to mow the grass themselves and not for the city to have to tell them they have to mow their grass. Maybe Howard remembers the time out on, what road was it? Pioneer Road East? Individual didn't like the cost of mowing as done by the contractor. But in that situation of a large area, I certainly agreed with the city because that property had on it stones and reinforcing rods sticking out of the ground. And I wouldn't want to take my mower out, my tractor mower out and go through that area and suffer potential damage to my equipment. So the goal is to get people to shift, to do it themselves, to get people to do the work. And we shouldn't have to be out there telling them, you need to mow your grass. And so I'd like to see a program where we carry out the complaint, the, not the complaint, but quickly notify them. I believe they have five days and then action. I don't agree with the idea of hiring more people and mowing the grass for them.
So just to clarify, we, we do go out, we check the site, we send the letter, we give them a period to comply. It's only if they don't comply that the grass would be mowed.
And, and what I hear, Counselor Killian-
Sending the letter is a lot of, lot of extra work. Why can't the code enforcement officer give them a note right away? Notification right away? Skip that step.
The step of the letter?
Yes.
I, I think we're required by our own code to send the letter. I guess I don't know.
Well, what I hear, Counselor Killian-
That, that's work.
What I hear him trying to say is that perhaps a $250 bill would be enough of a detriment that they would mow the next time without being told to mow. I mean, what would, what is the city going to, I mean, I'm assuming that if we have our own people do the mowing, what are we going to charge the citizen?
We would develop a fee based on, our fee would approximate our own costs. So if, if this is the direction you want to go, we would develop a fee. But the fee would not be as high as what the contractor is proposing charging.
I understand that. And I looked at, back at the 2017 rates. This particular contractor bid in the 2017 time period and these rates are not, are pretty, his, his rate for a minimum for rural areas was 200. This year, it's 250. His rate last year for isolated patches was 125. This year, it's 150. So while it's a big jump from the one con, the contract that we had last year, it's not a big jump from the other contracts that were, or the other bidders from last year. I mean, I, I understand it's a big jump. I, I just, I, I, and I also understand Counselor Killian's position in that how many more people do we want to hire? Is that what your position was, Ken?
Yes.
Right.
Why should we have to do it? I mean, charge enough so that they're encouraged to hire the necessary contractor to do it Going back to 132 complaints, I assume he had to go out and take pictures, send the letter for 132 complaints? Is that true?
Correct.
Yeah?
Correct.
That's, that's all wasted time, in my opinion. That's city time cost and we only got back $50 out of times 21?
Well, if this is something that the council wants to discuss at a work session, then we should decide to do that. We did that with the snow removal and came up with a, a different set of regulations for snow removal, Ken. So again, I don't know how the rest of the council members feel about it, but I don't think that staff can just right now give us an answer as to whether or not one idea is better than the other. It's a, it's a, a method we've been using, not to say it's the best or perfect method, but it, it's been used for a number of years. So again, if that's something that the council members decide they want to do-
Or be required.
We could have a work session on it, but I would want to know that from council members, that they are interested in that.
I recommend we do a work session.
Okay. Let me know if, if others feel that way.
Well, I agree with Counselor Killian that the, that the cost has to be significant enough that it dissuades that behavior. I mean, I recall being, when we initiated $50 parking tickets in areas where people weren't, were supposed to use a permit to park and then, and we were told, yeah, but that's a lot of money. Well, it is a lot of money because you're not supposed to park there. And if you get one ticket, you probably aren't going to do it again. So, I mean, I have, yes, I have a concern about the money, but I also have a concern about our assuming more work and adding staff to do that work. So I guess I'd support a work session.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, I, we're, I think we're overlooking how of the 132 complaints, you know, over 100 people went through that process of being noticed, notified, and they took care of it.
Took care of it.
So that little bit of work, what you're seeing, seemed to be putting as a lot of it at work, helped. So I'm, I'm leaning towards more, if it's not that much, that number three seems to be a better option, but of course, a work session could hash.
Something to mow over. Next is Contract 2018, fuel supply contract, 2018-19.
Yes. In the past, here oil has traditionally been low bidder to resupply our tanks. They're now out of business. They, they've been bought by another, another firm. So we conducted a request for proposal. We're doing this based on wholesale plus markup for them to deliver fuel to our tanks. And at this point, the, the low bidder is Mulgrew Oil and Propane at four cents above wholesale.
Questions or comments?
I have one question. On second paragraph, it says, you're looking into the use of a small fuel tank mounted in a truck bed for small engines like chainsaws, mowers, and weed eaters. Is this small fuel tank to supply the gasoline without any oil mixed in with it? So you take that gasoline and mix up in smaller cans, oil for a chainsaw, mower, or weed eater? Or do, or do those pieces of equipment have now a gas ratio of 50 to 1? So you don't have to use separate cans for a different piece of equipment? Or are they 25 to 1, some of them, and some of them 50 to 1, or what?
The, the crews would put in oil as needed for two-cycle engines if, if they needed to, but the, the, the issue here for us is right now, we're getting bulk fuel of unleaded gasoline with no ethanol in it, which is a, which is at a much higher cost. And we're burning it not only for the, for the small engines like the mowers and weed eaters and things like that, but we're also burning it in squad cars and other things. If we get this small tank, if we need to still mix with oil for certain things, we can still do so. But the idea is that the much larger tank that we use to fill squad cars, we can then fill with etan ethanol blend at a much lower cost. And we're still doing the research and making sure that we can, that we can do this, but we, we think that it will be more cost-effective to get the lower-priced ethanol-based fuel that can be burned in any of our gasoline vehicles and then reserve the higher octane no ethanol gasoline for the engines that actually require it.
Let me answer your question, Ken.
Well, I, I was asking too whether you have equipment with different oil gas ratios, gas-oil ratios, 50 to 1, 25 to 1?
I don't know that right off the top of my head, but I know that our crews take care of that for the engines that require the oil.
And the price that is bid is what, four cents over wholesale? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And as we've heard, the price of gasoline is going up.
That concludes the televised portion of our meeting. We are going to go to a work session to discuss the senior center request for proposal results.